Welcome everyone to the October 11, 2017 episode of the City of Edina Planning Commission. Jackie, would you call the role of the...
Here, Commissioner Thorson.
Present.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner McCall.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Chair Nemiroff.
Here, thank you very much Jackie. On tonight's agenda, we have one public hearing. Would anyone, everyone, has all members have received the agenda? Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Move approval of the agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, okay. We also received meeting minutes from our last meeting, which by the way, audience, we expect our last meeting to have been longer than this one will go. Were there any comments to the meeting minutes from last week, or last meeting?
I'm in approval of the minutes as submitted. Second.
We have a motion and approval, a motion and a second? Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that brings us to our public hearings tonight, and our public hearing is for a variance request at 5712 Woodland Lane. Chris Auger, Auger, excuse me, of the City of Edina Planning Department will present for us.
Chair, members of the planning commission, the request is for a 6.1-foot first-floor elevation variance for a new home at 5712 Woodland Lane. The subject property is highlighted here. It's at the end of Woodland Lane cul-de-sac. It's located sort of in the west portion of the cul-de-sac. It backs up to Minnehaha Creek. There's a little closer view of it. The house was built in 1952. It's a multi-level home. It was built very close to the north lot line. There's a reason for that. There's a sewer line that bisects the lot. About a third or more of the lot is unbuildable, given the fact that there's a 20-foot, pardon me, 10-foot sewer easement that you can't build on, so you can't cross over into the other part of the lot to try to build. There's also flood zone that goes all the way around the property. The house itself has a basement elevation that is almost four feet lower than the flood protection elevation. All of the homes in that neighborhood were built around the same time, and they were built prior to the city's FEMA floodplain study, which was conducted in 1979. And it's not uncommon to have some of the homes non-conforming, located within the flood zone, and their basements at, or lower than the flood elevation. This is a survey of the home as it exists today. You can see that sewer line that bisects the lot. It's a very large lot. Unfortunately, there is not a lot of area to build within. The setbacks, standard setbacks also apply. You have a 10-foot setback on either side, 25 feet from the rear. The front yard setback is matching the home to the north. And there's also a 50-foot setback from the creek. You also have to stay outside of that sewer easement. You can't cross over and build within any of this area. And there is a flood elevation that the home has to be elevated and removed from. This is the footprint of the proposed house, which the house that is proposed for the site is actually in a very similar location, and it's about the same size in terms of footprint. There is not a lot of opportunity to change that, given the constraints of the property. Here's a more detailed view of that. This gives you an idea of the impact of the flood zone on the property. You can see lightly underneath the aerial photograph of the home relative to the flood zone. The creek wraps around the entire lot, and you can see how it does overlap into the property. And the basement is actually much lower than the minimum flood protection elevation. Here's a very similar map showing pretty much the same thing, but it also includes that sewer line, and then also this sketched-in area that the applicant indicated is really the buildable area of the lot. You can see that the yellow outline is the lot lines of the property, and it's a very large lot. Unfortunately, there isn't a lot of opportunity to build on it. Another map showing that flood zone and how it affects the existing home. You can see the aerial photograph underneath. This is how the home looks today. It is a multi-level home. This is the front door, which is steps up or down from other levels of the home. The first floor of a multi-level home is considered the entry level of the home, regardless of whether there's steps up or steps down, which also complicates how you would rebuild, given the fact that it's a multi-level home. Your first-floor elevation is limited to one feet, foot above that existing front-door elevation. And then you have the basement elevation that needs to be elevated, a minimum of two feet above the flood elevation. The existing basement is already almost four feet lower than it, so you end up having the sandwich effect, given that you have to elevate that basement because of the floodplain. So the variance is actually to increase that first-floor height because the basement must be elevated. Here's another view of the house with the home next door. The house next door is, the grade is a little bit higher. It sits up a little bit higher than the subject home. It also is under the same conditions. There's a, the flood zone affects a number of properties along the cul-de-sac. This is a view of the proposed home. It's a two-story home. The zoning ordinance, it meets all of the zoning ordinance requirements with the exception of the first-floor elevation, which is difficult, given that the lot has a lot of challenges. It meets all of the setback requirements. It's well underneath the lot coverage requirements. The lot coverage requirement is 25% of the lot area. It's a very large lot, but given the constraints, they have to keep it almost within the same footprint of the existing house. And then the other piece is that the overall height of a building is measured from existing grade. And so when you measure this house from existing grade, and they're allowed to go up to 40 feet, because it is such a wide and large lot, if you measure this house from the existing grade, not where they're proposing to raise it up to, it will be under the 40-foot maximum. It'll be 39 feet. So they are not asking for an overall height variance, even though they're having to lift the house, excuse me, further out of the ground, and increase that first-floor elevation. So here is a view of the east elevation, which is the front of the house, and then also north and elevation that's facing the creek. This gives you an idea of the existing condition. In red is the house showing in context with the home next door. And then also imposed on the lower view is the proposed home, and what the requirement is to lift that basement elevation up above the flood elevation with the new first floor. You can kind of see the existing front door of the home, which is here. So the new first floor is increased to the extent to allow eight-and-a-half-foot ceilings, which are not uncommon for new construction. I would say I typically see anywhere from nine to 11-foot ceilings in basements now. If somebody is going to be tearing down or rebuilding, they want taller ceilings in the basement. So in this instance, they're not asking for a extremely high ceiling height in their basement. And then you have your standard trusses, so that brings the first floor up beyond the one-foot maximum height requirement. So this is the home in context after it's been regraded, showing the house next door. The house is, in terms of overall height, it's within the requirements. They are not asking for a height variance. They are not asking for setback variances. They've worked within the confines of the sewer line. What they are requesting is a first-floor height variance, given the fact that they are required to elevate above the flood zone. Now, the zoning ordinance does allow variances for first-floor elevation under a number of conditions, and they include to elevate the lowest elevation of the dwelling to an elevation of two feet above the 100-year flood elevation, which in this instance, they are requesting that, and then to elevate the lowest level of the dwelling to protect it from groundwater intrusion. That is another, they also meet that requirement. And to elevate the first-floor elevation to the extent necessary to meet the state building code, which they need to get it out of the flood zone. That is something that the city and the watershed district, if we have the opportunity to support that, we certainly will encourage that. We want to get the properties that are non-conforming and that are subject to flooding out of that hazard area. Staff does believe that the property meets the requirements to approve a variance for the first-floor elevation requirement. Staff does recommend approval of the variance as requested, subject to the survey date stamped September 11, 2017, and the building plans and elevations date stamped September 11, 2017. There was a memo that was included in your packet from the engineering department indicating that they will have to obviously have the watershed district and the engineering department take a look at the grading of the property, but that will be a function of the building permit application. Both the watershed district and engineering department will look at that. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Chris. Do any commissioners have any questions for the city planning department? Commissioner Strauss.
So, any new construction would have to meet these FEMA requirements, correct?
Yes.
So, we're really in a, if the property is to be built on, this is the only, I mean, that's the level that would have to be done to, right? I mean, there is no...
That's the minimum...
Or leaving as it is, would be the...
Right. I mean, leaving it as a non-conforming obstruction in the flood zone, which is not something the city, you know, wants to continue. If we have an opportunity, obviously, to get a property out of the flood zone, have a new house then elevated, you know, however that can be accomplished, I mean, that really is our goal.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Lee.
Chris, can you show on the elevation where you are saying that you take it from the existing grade, and that this house is how tall?
You're referring to the overall height?
Yep, because you said it stays under the 39-foot limit or 40-foot limit.
It's under the 40-foot limit, and it's, the existing grade from the, maybe I should, the existing house here, actually, you average the grade from the lowest to the highest point, and when you measure it from that point to the top of the roof, it's 39 feet.
So can you show that point, that average point, on the new elevation? I mean, at some point, they must have had to show that, right? So, or had a drawing that said, here's the existing grade, and here we are only at 39 feet.
Well, yeah, I mean, what I've looked at and what isn't showing on the plan, they're showing that the ridge height is at 901. The existing survey shows the grade along the new front, where the building wall is. And I asked the question, and I did keep it, it's in your packet, I did ask specifically that the builder call that out, because I asked the same question. And it is part of your packet. So their intention is that they will stay at 39 feet, which is below the 40-foot maximum.
Okay, and then if you could look at slide 15 there, where it's sitting on top of the existing house, so that looks significantly higher. I suppose our, what we're saying is, they are taking that lower level now and actually putting it, setting the first-floor level, the first floor, at the roof line, the existing roof line. That was their choice. That has nothing to do with the FEMA. The FEMA says the lower level must be two feet above wherever that point is, right? So they've got, we're going to assume here that the lower level is set at the right point, which is wherever down by the garage. How tall is it from the lower level to the first floor? And I guess I am asking, how tall is that basement level?
Well, the basement ceiling height from the floor to where the ceiling is, is eight feet, six inches. And then there's probably 18-inch floor trusses. I think the builder could probably address this better than I.
Okay.
What is a little deceptive in this photograph is that, again, you have to remember, this is a multi-level home, and the measurement for the first floor, existing first floor, is at the threshold where you walk in the door. Now, you can go upstairs or downstairs. It's not, it's not a typical house where everything is at the same level when you walk in the door. You will be going upstairs to get to another level, which, you know, maybe somebody might consider that their first floor. You can see that the first floor here is higher, but, you know, at the, a few feet higher than a level that is up from the front door. Multi-level homes are very difficult to deal with, with the ordinance that we currently have for the first floor, regardless of whether you're trying to elevate a basement or not. The builders have a challenge with that.
So I guess I'm not understanding why, I mean, this looks like a three-story building. Why, why do they need to pilot, why not make that the first-floor level right there? Right there? Where, right, they're trying to build, pull up the dirt then, so that it will become a basement level? Is that the idea?
You mean, why isn't this the first level?
Right, why isn't that the first level?
That's the basement. That's how high they have to bring the basement up to this, to this ground level.
Correct.
And that's below grade. The ordinance requires a basement. Every house has to have a basement in Edina. You have to have at least 50% of the floor area below the first-floor basement area, and tuck-under garages don't count. So they have to have a basement.
Okay, so if the FEMA level is established right now, there's actually not enough land, dirt on top? Are you seeing the water table level is almost matching the surface of the grade now, essentially, is what we're saying, right?
Well, in a flood event, I mean, the elevation is set much higher than where the basement is currently, so, which means in a flood event, it's going to flood. So that's why it needs to be elevated to, and granted, all these homes, most of these homes were built prior to 1979, before the city had their FEMA study done. I think the city got a little bit better, because some of the homes that are, were built sort of around that time, but probably more recently, they're on slab, and they don't have basements. But even some of those are at slab-grade level, still lower or at exactly the flood elevation than they should be elevated. So it's not unique to this house in this neighborhood. There are, and I do have some backup here. Jessica Wilson with our engineering department, she is our water resource coordinator, and she actually probably knows a lot more about the flood zone than I do, but maybe you can help me out with that.
Sure. So for this house in particular, there has to be a basement, and so this one had to be elevated by so much. So from the back of the house, you can see all three levels from the front of the house. You'll see more of a grade...
If I can, the right side of the dais tonight is itchy. Commissioner Hamilton, Commissioner Barrett, which one of you would...
I think we have the same breath tonight. I think I missed something, and I think it's already been verified. The house has to have a basement. And I'm, and I think, Chris, you helped us with that, and I didn't follow the argument. Could you help me understand why it has to have a basement again, please?
It's a zoning requirement. It's a requirement. So if you don't want a basement, then you have to get a variance. You have to go in front of the planning commission to get a variance.
I did not know that.
Yes.
Thank you.
So this is going to be considered a walkout basement then? So from the back, you can see those kind of three levels, basement, first floor, upper floor, and then from the front of the house, there's a lot more grading that goes up to that first floor, and then you can see those, kind of the two levels from the front.
And then, if you... Engineering's looked at the calculations and determined that the water runoff is not going to be any more, that's my understanding, than it currently is on the current site? Is that correct?
So we're requiring that the structure be removed from that floodway area, so it's going to be pushed closer to the street a little bit to remove it from that space. And then we're also requiring that there be no net fill, so that that flood storage remains the same as it was prior to the new structure. With the building permit application, we're going to require that they have a professional engineer certify that that is a balanced cut and fill, because part of the purpose of the zoning ordinance for the floodplain overlay district is to ensure that we maintain safety for the community. It's not just for this property, but that we don't risk, push that risk on anybody else.
When you say balanced cut and fill, I'm sorry, at first I thought you were just talking about water. You are saying that there's no net import of soil to do this?
Right, right.
But the, how can that be when that sits so far up and there's that much landscaping?
Yeah, so if you look at the back here, in the lower part of the slide, they're going to have just a wall with some really deep footings, so they're not adding a big pad like you would for, with soil to build up higher. They're just building a wall with deep footings and doing some floodproofing, I would expect, but they can comment on that. So there's not going to be a net increase in fill in the backyard. That's a requirement. They're going to have to prove that with their building permit application.
And then, at that point, the city could still deny it if they feel that the fill is excessive?
Correct. So this is not a building permit approval. This is just for that first-floor elevation. Once, if that variance is granted, then they'll move into that design and that professional engineering. But it's a little bit, it's a jump ahead to do that now without knowing if they even can raise the first floor right now.
And it's my understanding that the watershed district also gets involved when there's more than 50 cubic yards of fill that come in. Now, there's a little more monitoring of...
Yep, so, and if it intersects with a floodplain area, then that would also trigger a permit from the watershed district.
Can you flip to the other elevation then? I understand here, it doesn't look like, okay, they're not adding much fill. All right, this east elevation, that becomes very steep, and there's a lot of retaining walls there holding fill. Where'd that come from?
Yeah, and that's, they're going to have to...
What parts being cut out that's moved around, I guess?
They're, in the back, there's actually not that much fill. They're moving the structure towards the street. They're kind of, if you imagine, shortening the driveway and moving it towards the front a little bit more, so there is a little bit of space for that. And they're just not allowed to do any work below that 860.2 floodway elevation.
And then, within this design here, where does the water go? Are you requiring any kind of drain tiles or receptors that lead to the street, or anything from the roof eaves? What, and maybe that's part of the building permit review, but what do you, in general, what are some of the things to address sort of this multi-layering hill wedding cake effect?
Yeah. And a stormwater management plan will be required with a new home building permit. And the, the design will, we, will allow water to move either towards the street or towards the back of the house into the creek area. They just aren't allowed to direct water to neighboring lots. As far as if there's going to be any water quality requirements or volume restrictions, that would come from the watershed district. The city doesn't have any volume retention or water quality requirements for a lot like this.
And how do you ensure that it does not run onto the neighboring properties?
That's part of our engineering review. And if it does, then we have, require them to make corrections or build swales. That's pretty common for new homes, to ensure that they're not affecting neighbor properties.
This question's for Chris, actually. This one reminds me a lot of the Crocker Avenue issue, and I think that one was very similar. It kind of built it up on a, on a teardown, and it built up, brought the grade up substantially, and ended up having some water issues affect the neighboring property. So knowing what you know about that project, how will you address sort of that, those, so that that kind of thing would not happen here? I'm just looking at this, this similar retaining wall massing of the, of the dirt in order to bring the house up substantially from what the existing condition is now. That did affect the neighbors on that Crocker Avenue property. So how, was there anything that changed from that result that you would do differently now, or is being done differently, or will be required of the applicant?
Those would be engineering issues, and not necessarily a zoning issue, because engineering does review the runoff and the drainage of it.
I can answer that, too. So part of that building permit application packet will require a stormwater management plan from, from their professional engineer that they hire. So they're going to have to show, they're going to have to prove that they're not going to impact their neighbors with that runoff.
Is there some amount of escrow or anything that we take from a developer in the case that their other property owners are damaged or affected by?
There is an escrow for a building permit. I don't know the exact amount. I want to say it's 10,000? I'm a little bit removed from the building department, so I'm not sure what they charge for their permit applications, but I think that's...
I think that's the correct amount?
10,000, yeah.
Okay.
And there have been cases in the past with other properties and other builders where we've had to use that escrow to make corrections. It's not very common, but it's happened in the past.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment about the escrow. The escrow is not for the city to do mitigation for a neighbor. It is used if there are corrections required on the site of the project, just to be clear.
Okay. And then I would just say, if you, I would recommend that you take a look at the results of that project, that Crocker project, because I believe it was possibly even the same, same developer. But my concern is that there are those kinds of issues that are generated when we are asked to look at a variance based on a FEMA elevation, but the home itself is going substantially higher than what is there. I might even say that in this case, I would be happy to grant a variance to get rid of that basement. So consider that, and just build it up as a two-story house. That's your first level. I'd be happy to look at that. This, right now, I understand the need for a variance. I'm not sure, I'm just not sure that this is the right treatment on this piece of land, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Bennett?
Since Commissioner Hamilton stole my first question, I do have a follow-up to that. Since this example kind of shows, you know, three sides of the basement fully excavated, and one being a whole set of garage doors, what defines basement according to the city building code?
You have to have at least 50% of an area below the first floor that has adequate ceiling height that is, I mean, that's not just a crawl space.
And I guess I'm, because to me, you know, it looks like there's one side of this, and all three are open. What makes that a basement versus a first floor? Is it because of the amount of earth that's below? What's considered the ground, or, I just wanted to know that.
Well, the first-floor elevation is determined by where the, the previous front-door elevation was, so that's the first-floor elevation. So anything below that is the basement. So anything below that is the basement. And the basement generally has grade around it, which this does, and it's the lowest level that needs to be elevated if you are in the flood zone, if it's habitable space. I'm not sure if it's crawl space, does that have to be elevated?
Yeah.
It's a three-story house.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to understand that. If it's required to have a basement, and this in effect does, then I guess why is it limited to, I mean, just from the pictures of how it fits in with the neighbor, it looks like another story above it just stands way out, so, elevation. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Any other questions? You know, I have two. First of all, an earlier, this is curiosity as much as anything, and one of your earlier slides showed the flood range from the creek. Wonder if you could bring that up again? It had the red, yeah, now will the, I guess a couple of questions on this one. First of all, is this everywhere where it has flooded, or has it ever gone, or has been flooding beyond where the red shows?
Good question. So I'll point out the areas on this map. The red is the floodway, and that's kind of the area that we expect, expect most of the velocity of the water to be moving through, so that's the creek that it's down.
And where the house, the new house will sit?
A, a new house or a non-forming house, if they're going to, well, it doesn't apply because they're going to do a new house instead of a remodel, but new houses cannot be in the floodway. So they're actually going to be scooting that, that house forward a little bit to stay out of that red area.
Jessica, I'm sorry, Ben, if you could just point out on here where the new house will sit? Also, you know, when you show, this is how far the waters have gone, and this is where the new house will sit?
So this is, this is a model of where the flooding would occur, so this isn't necessarily what's happened in the past. We also know that this model, FEMA uses some TP40 precipitation data that is pretty old, in fact. The newer model incorporates much more recent rainfall events that are much higher. So this is a pretty conservative model, in fact, and the flood elevations, in 2014, we're pretty close to this, but the new projected models, if we were to use the new precipitation model, would probably be even higher than this. So that's part of the reason for that two-foot freeboard, is so that as conditions change over time, that there's that level of protection. So this is probably conservative, and it's just a model, it's not based on actual, although the 2014 data was pretty similar. So the new structure proposed would be, the back of the structure would be just outside of this red area here. So the footprint's going to look really similar, just kind of scooted towards the cul-de-sac a little bit more to get out of that floodway area.
Thanks, I mean, because I've seen houses on the creek where it's like, whoa, you have less of a yard than you did last year, so, I was wondering, and then also, if you could turn to slide 15, which shows the elevation against the neighbor's house. Yeah, and it's, the bottom one in particular, and this is a little different issue, I think it's nice in this situation, I, let me back up. What I'm focused on here is the height differential between the house and the, the new house and the neighbor's house, and possible views down or into the neighbor's house. I mean, it appears of the neighbor's house, the garage is the facing struck, is the facing room to the, this new house, so that makes the views issues a little less. Is that correct? That, that that's, it's all garage, there's none, none other kind of living room on that side?
Actually, I can't answer that. I know the garage is, as you can see in the front, but I don't, I don't know if there's something behind it.
Do we, have we heard anything about how the house, oh, the applicant knows better?
My new garage is, is a family room.
It's a family room?
It's a family room that faces the creek and to the south.
Okay. How close will the, the houses be? I mean, will people be on the second floor, be able to look down into the family room?
I'm sure they would.
I'm sorry?
This shows the relationship between the proposed house and the house to the north. They're, they get closer as you get further towards the street, and further, they, you know, kind of pull away as you get further back.
Chris?
It doesn't have a dimension on it, so I can't tell you.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't have a dimension on it, so I can't tell you how far.
Chris, is that the applicant in the back who's answering also? Okay. That's all I have. Do you have anything else? I'm sorry to have interrupted you, Chris, on that answer.
Nope.
Should we bring the applicant up and let them speak? If the applicant would like to say something? Hello?
Got it. Hi, I'm Andy Porter. I'm with Refind. We're the, with a contractor in this case. We do have a homeowner that we're building this home for. He is here. I'm also here with Jeff Lindgren, right here. He's the architectural person involved in this project. Just a little bit of background, we've been working on this for about a year. It's been a long process. It's a very difficult, challenging site, as we can all, as we can all see. And we've gone through many meetings with the city engineers, not only Jessica, but Charlie as well. We've also interacted with the watershed. So what we've tried to do is, is develop the right home for our client and to meet the goals of the city, which is to get the home out of the floodway. For a lot of different reasons, they want it out of there, but safety is one of those. And trying to really find that balancing act between that and the neighborhood as well. So we feel like we put a very thoughtful design together, trying to manage all those different stakeholders, and we're pretty proud of actually how it turned out. And, trying to think, I can answer some of those more detailed questions you have, if you want to ask them again. Otherwise, any other questions, Jeff or I can, can answer for you as well.
Well, thank you. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Porter? Would you like to re-ask any of our technical questions? Are we good? Commissioner Lee?
So if you could just explain to me a little bit about the heights, I think you probably see what the issue is. This house is considerably higher already, because it's essentially three stories. You're bringing the basement level to, to grade, essentially, and now it's a three-story building. The surrounding homes are more or less one-story ramblers, or one below grade. So maybe you could talk about how you feel this actually fits the site? This actually seems to be a pretty typical-looking house that I've seen throughout Edina. Maybe there's some variance on it, but what is it about this site, how you addressed it specifically, and why, why this shape? Although I understand there's many different home styles, I do not personally see the character of this as, as matching the surrounding. Not that you have to stay as a rambler, but it is, it's much more of a farmhouse colonial, very peaked, you know, gabled ends, yada, yada. So if you could talk about how, you said you've been planning this for a while, so what is it specifically that you did to tailor it to the site, to address the...
So number one, the, the site is large, and there's a lot of large lots in that area. The challenge with, we never considered a rambler, because one, our client didn't want a rambler, but two, it wouldn't have fit. So there's no way to get that consistent to the neighboring to the right, which is really the only property you see as a streetscape are those two together, generally. When we look at aesthetics, I think that is a little too subjective to, to answer your question, I think. But it was driven by, we want to keep the massing down, we want to keep the architectural style. There was a direction of very contemporary at the beginning of the design process, and we pulled that back for a number of reasons, and one of those was streetscape. So we, we contemplated things that were right for our client, things that were right for the, the overall neighborhood, but we were so limited by what we could actually do. You know, we looked, we studied the garage and the garage location. We talked about putting that in the front at one point, and not winding it around to the back. But then we thought, you're going to have that three-story facade at the front, so we backed away from that idea. So we went through a lot of iterations to come to this point, but stylistically, if, if the farmhouse, as you put it, isn't the right look, that was driven more by another stakeholder rather than, you know, again, that's a subjective idea, so.
Well, I'm not, not saying that you have to justify that. I'm saying the massing, obviously, you, you said you, you were trying to keep the massing down. There's a reason the massing had to go this way. Are you saying that there's parts of this lot that forced you into a very small footprint? I mean, walk me through that a little bit more.
Yeah. Parts of the lot forced us into the, the smallest footprint you can, that we could frankly design a modern home on, because of the sewer, because of the setback, because of the FEMA regulations in the back, and because of the front yard setback with the neighboring property. So we were boxed in to, to this, to this particular pad, if that's, if that's what your question is.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
What would be some of the issues if you, if we were able to grant a variance for exempting from the basement, so now you no longer need to treat it as a basement and cover it up with dirt? How would that affect your design requirements?
That's a totally different house. It's a totally different design and different program completely. That would be a question for the homeowner, and would that be their preference? The challenge about the process here, and there's no right way to do this, is we, for us to submit a proposal, we have to fully develop the plan to this level, which, I don't need to tell you how much time and money goes into getting it to this point, but to start over again with a non-preferred design, if that's even the direction our client would want to go, I'm not sure that's possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, are you with, are you with the developer? Okay, thank you. Sorry.
I want to try and answer your question.
Could you just state your name also?
Yeah, Jeff Lindgren with Jalen Design.
Thank you.
The architect on the project. So to answer your question, so our billable footprint is very limited because of what Andy was saying about the sewer line, the setbacks that we have, and then the FEMA across the back. So we're really only allowed about a, I don't know if off exactly, but it's around 1,500, 1,600 square feet of a footprint area. If we total up the main level and the, or the lower level in the garage, you'll kind of see what we have. So when we developed a plan that was trying to do a garage that's front-loading, or if we were to try to say, let's not do a basement at all, well, you subtract out a garage, doesn't leave you very much for a, a main level footprint area, to be able to build a house that is suitable for a whole, or for a family. So we needed that lower level space to be able to gain a place to put the garage, but then also to meet code with Edina, and then to give them an additional 800 square feet of living space that we couldn't obtain by growing the footprint, because we're constrained. So that's some of the developments that we had gone through early on to see what is going to happen. Now, Chris, can I grab that file up here? Or, I don't know which one it is. I, I do not disagree that there is a considerable difference between what we're proposing and the neighboring home. And there's nothing we can do about that, because these homes were built when they were. For instance, if this, if the neighboring house floods, needs to be torn down and rebuilt, they have to go through and do the same thing that we're doing. So what we're trying to do is, we are the first here, so we're having to pioneer what this is going to happen, but, you know, this whole area is, is predisposed and lower than it needs to be or should be. So we have to raise that up to create this new facade, this new elevation, grade elevation. So when they come to redo their house, if ever it ever happens, but we're planning that it probably will, then they'll be able to pick up on the same area, or same elevation that we have started. So in essence, these retaining walls could actually be removed, and then this grade will continue over for the home that comes here. But right now, since we can't drain any of our water onto neighboring lot land, that's what the retaining walls are for, to help. We're actually, we actually could have actually done, done no retaining walls and had a nice gradual slope, but what we wanted to do was slow down any surface water, so that it actually has time to actually penetrate the ground and then percolate into the ground before it even gets to the street, before it gets to the creek as well.
Can you explain a little bit how it does do that percolating?
Well, over, you know, if the slope is flat, it's going to take time to percolate. If it's sloping, it has a chance to roll and keep rolling down the hill, and it'll percolate some as it goes. But now what we're doing is flattening it out, so it gives it more surface area, and it slows it down so that it can actually enter the ground before it keeps moving.
So you're grading on those, so all those retaining walls, all that grass above there is not sloped, it's flat? It's going to, it's going to hold?
There's...
You're kind of terracing it?
Yes. It is slope, but it's not at a one to, you know, one to four, one to three slope.
Yeah.
We're going to be a much shallower pitch.
Okay.
We're trying, of course, we have to grade it away from the house, but it's, we've slowed it down by terracing that retaining wall system.
Have you done any calculations yet at all, looking at the stormwater?
Um, you know, our civil engineer has run through and done some preliminary calculations. Yeah, but we have to provide all of this information before we can even get our permit, so we know that we've preliminary, you've done it to know that we could actually go to this meeting and provide a substantial case.
Well, I was wondering if you would be open to providing those calculations before we have to make that decision? Because in some ways, we've had issues where this has impacted adjacent neighbors, and I think it would really help the case to say that you've already cranked the numbers and...
Well, we are going to have to prove that before we get the permit.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
So for us to start continuing to develop, we need to be granted a variance to develop, and then we would go through those.
So what I'm asking is, in order to be granted the variance, would you feel that it would be worth it to crank the numbers and then come back and then ask for the variance then?
Um, I don't, I don't see that, the validity, and because our variance has nothing to do with water mitigation, it has to do with just our elevation. So we're going to have to provide that, but we need to take this step before we can finalize our other information and present that to you.
Okay.
I just want to try to understand a little bit more. So the, the neighboring property that you see on the screen here, they're actually higher up than, than our, our point at the property line. So there's a natural swale of the water actually coming our direction. So I just want to make sure you understand that we're not above them, we're actually below them, at the bottom of our wall. Can you see that? Does that make sense?
Yes.
And there are no properties, there are no other properties that are direct, or there are no other properties with homes on them connected to ours. So the only, the only concerning property, if I'm understanding, is that one there, and we're below that.
Yes.
If that makes sense. So the water that would come off this tiering effect that doesn't perk down, would come down next to that wall, and would not be allowed to go uphill, obviously. It would have to run down along, and that's what the city checks when we go in for our building permit. We have to show them those contours. We have to prove that to them before they let our homeowner move in at the end of the project. So there are levels of checking on those types of things, just so you know.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment with the walls on that side. I mean, for what you guys are proposing, that does make sense to me from what you explained. And that's kind of what I was thinking, too. I mean, whatever kind of slope you would need to push up against that basement wall, would go right up to the property line, and all that water would then just shed toward that house, so having those walls in place at least allows it to flow toward the creek and away from that home. It doesn't look the best, but that's kind of what you got to do.
Commissioner Bennett, do you have anything further, or any? Any other commissioners? Commissioner Mittal?
It's like, in terms like the necessity for extra space, would you consider maybe having a two-story house with the basement and the first floor, but like, the basement and first floor would effectively be like the first and second level respectively? Maybe you could somehow expand the square footage of the second floor? Like, would that work somehow?
Well, it goes back to that, we, we don't have the buildable footprint to be able to have that opportunity, if that makes sense, if I answer that for you. Yep. And Commissioner Bennett, you had mentioned one time... to have that opportunity, if that makes sense, if I answer that for you. Yep. And Commissioner Bennett, you had mentioned one time, or early on, about that we have three sides that are basically three levels. Well, we can't do anything to the grade on this, on the east, on the north, and/or even on the south side. Because of the FEMA line, we're not allowed to adjust the grade. So if we could raise it, we would, because that would help get water away from the house even more and maybe not make it look like it's three stories. Although on lake or a creek side, it's not unheard of because of the grade change that are typically happening on some homes. But yeah, we have no ability to change the grade there, so.
I was just more curious about what truly defined a basement, so.
Sure, yep.
Thanks.
Commissioner Lee?
Yep, one last question. So how much fill did you calculate that you're going to need to bring in?
That's 500 cubic yard, 500, it's two truckloads of 500 cubic feet, I'm sorry, 500 cubic feet.
Okay.
And we've started studying that. So to expand on what that means is, as we develop our, the fill that we're going to be adding in the floodway is actually out by the driveway and by the street. We need to find cut, meaning we need to, so that's where water used to be able to go, in their estimation. Now we need to create buckets of locations where water can now go, and that would be in the backyard. And we've started to study three different locations where those, and basically you're just scooping out like a bathtub in different parts of the yard so that water can go there during a flood. So we're working on that. That will be part of our building permit application, but the requirement, from what I read in the engineering report, is that we have to balance those two things. So if we're taking 500 out, we got to find 500 of new space for water to go. That's one of the requirements.
Could you also discuss that question I asked about the relative height and views onto the house next door? Give your input on that.
So the north elevation is that side, sorry, the north elevation is the side that's adjoining or going to be next to the property to the north. So these, most of the windows that are going to be where we would have any people that is going to be close are relatively high. We have two here in the hallway, and then these are in an office space, which are closer to the garage where there is no living space. So as we get towards the back of the house, we went to higher windows, if that answers your question. Let me see where that-- So this is, I believe, part of the garage, and this looks too wide to be a full garage, but it could be the full garage. But as, so we have high windows on this plane, and we have lower windows on that plane, if you can see my cursor there. Can you see that or no? Maybe you can.
I know you're hamstringing developing this project because of the many natural and sewer lines and natural impediments, but how close are the two houses? How close are those walls?
We have to be 10 feet off of that property line.
Oh, you are off 10 feet?
Yep, and that other home is going to be equally that, so we're at--
Okay.
For sure, 20 feet.
Okay. And then, and this may be a question for the city as much as for you, but have you had any communication with that neighbor about the house?
Yeah, for sure. I don't know if--
No, you haven't. Don't tell him you have. We have--
I haven't. I was, if I could finish. The actual owner of the property has talked with the owner to the north.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll hear it later. Thank you. Would you like to say anything further, or otherwise, thank you. You don't, no need to, if you don't want to.
Yeah, I'll just finish with, the code has conflicting ordinances. It has the, you have to be two feet above the floodplain, and you can't be more than a foot above the existing. Those two are in conflict, right? The nice thing is, is the code actually gives, one of those two codes gives preference to the other. If you read it, it says that these are the three reasons why coming out of the floodplain trumps the one-foot rule. So this has been contemplated, and I know that this variance has been before this board before. But the nice thing is whoever wrote this code contemplated this issue, and I believe we're following it to the letter of the law, if you will. So it's a challenging thing, but it's been contemplated, and it kind of teed everything up for us to do it right here, so. I'll leave it at that. Okay?
Well, thank you. Anything further? Well, thank you. So this is a public hearing, which means that any member of the audience who wishes to come up and speak about this matter can have three minutes, up to three minutes. We will try to limit you, or we will make strong efforts to limit you to three minutes. We just ask if you'd like to come forward, stand at one of the two side lecterns, and please state your name and your address. So if there's anyone like to speak, now is the chance.
Hi, I'm DeeDee Drays. I live across the creek at 5633 Woodcrest Drive. So I look at the back of this property, very concerned, probably more concerned now than I was when I first got the letter. First of all, I realize from talking to the city today that this is the community's only opportunity to express our opinions. So a good portion of what we really need to hear, which is grading plans, engineering plans, things that could be devastating to our properties if not done properly, will happen after this hearing, and we'll have no opportunity to weigh in, to make sure that we're protected, to make sure the debacle at Crocker doesn't happen again. And to be quite honest, there's plenty of Adina citizens who feel like that is a debacle. The city engineering is not without making mistakes, and big mistakes were made, and neighboring properties suffered as a result of that. We don't want the same thing to happen again. So I really like Commissioner Lee's question about, would you be willing to put together grading plans, engineering assessments, all of that, to give the neighbors the assurance we need that we won't be impacted, we're all at risk, we'll all be at much lower grade? I did a major remodel of the home I'm currently living in back in 2008, 2009. I needed a three-foot variance to get out of the floodplain. I was granted that variance, and I did not act upon it after I learned what I would have to do with the grading and engineering. Basically scoop out a basin that was two-thirds the side of my backyard and create a mosquito pond for all the neighbors to have as a nuisance to their properties. I listened to my neighbors, and this was before the flood of 2014. Had I known that, I would have sought a variance for no basement. It's the neighborly thing to do. It protects the property. There are options other than building a three-story home that subjects neighbors to great risk of flooding, not knowing what the grading's going to be, not knowing if the engineering is going to be correct this time. We get it, mistakes are made, but there's a lot of buzz in the city about builders getting preferential treatment and lazy eyes looking at their engineering plans as opposed to citizens who are doing the same thing, maybe without the big Adina builder name behind them. So to know that this is our only opportunity to have a voice and not know what the grading's going to be, what the elevation is going to be, it is very concerning for us. And I also looked at page 13, I think, which was the back of the house, and I didn't see any exposed concrete, which gives me concern because obviously there's ground pushed up against that, there's windows. I don't know how that's possible unless there's going to be dirt added to the back of that home, and don't know where the dirt is going to be coming from that's removed. Just too many questions for us and no opportunity to have those questions answered with engineering assessments not done at this time.
Thank you. That was remarkably, that was timed remarkably well to conclude at three minutes, so thank you. Are there any other members of the audience who would like to say something tonight?
Yeah, I'm Martin Freeman. I'm 5637 Woodcrest Drive, right across the creek, also looking out on this property. You know, I'll try to keep it brief, but you know, I've lived there for 24 years, watched floods come and go. Neighbor to the north has never had floodwater in the basement. And I think if you can see that red mark on the projected floodplain, it didn't go into their basement. There, you look at this floor plan, it is essentially totally disrespectful to the entire neighborhood, only some of who could be here tonight. It's a high-rise. It involves major regrading of the land, and it will drastically affect the watershed. And, you know, I've watched the creek rise and fall for 23 years. You can't do this kind of regrading without redirecting water into other properties, but it's also aesthetically completely out of keeping with the neighborhood, and it will essentially put the neighbor's house into a ditch. My neighbor DeeDee was very gracious when she applied for variance to respect the neighborhood desire not to build a house on a hill. And all of us suffer the consequences of floods every now and then, but you know, it's maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. This is completely out of keeping and, and I think disrespectful to the neighborhood if you look at it with any kind of objectivity. And the architect and the builder, you know, they, this is a one-time deal for them. But, you know, we have to live with this forever, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? I will also note that I should have noted originally, initially, the yellow light will go on when you're getting close to three minutes, and the red light will come on. But otherwise, thank you. Come on up.
Okay. My name is Kent Oaks, and I live at 3936 West 58th Street. We are the southern point of what happens on the other side of the creek. We look at this property every morning and every night, and we were there in 87 when the floods came, and we watched the water go through the house that you're speaking of on that property, where it was seven and a half feet of water going through that house. We had water to our back door, and that happened twice that week, where it was on a Thursday night and then on a Sunday. So of course, when I hear the words "fill" and then the height of the construction that is wanting to go in there, or desires to go in there, it concerns me that if we have that kind of water again, which we've been there for 41 years, and it's been serious many times, not as much as 1987, but we, of course, are very concerned. How will this flow of the creek actually not be changed? As it is, it's challenging, but if it changes enough, we would be very concerned with what happens as far as the hill and the water, as far as it being higher, et cetera. So not understanding it completely, it does seem like a very tall building that doesn't fit with the area, but that's visually, but we are concerned with the water. Thank you.
Are there any other audience members who would like to speak tonight?
Lori Groetz, 5513 Park Place. I don't live on the street, but I live very close in the neighborhood. I've lived there since 1979. With all the teardowns that are going on, the big issue is drainage, drainage, drainage. What are you going to do with water? The house on Crocker is infamous in the neighborhood. The neighbor next door, this contractor built that house on Crocker. The house next door, that neighbor had to put in two 20x20 rain gardens to handle all the water. That's 800 square feet. I heard that she also had to sue him. So engineering necessarily isn't going to take care of all the water. If the planning commission decides to grant this variance, you have the power and the discretion to put conditions to it. And the planning commission has done this several times in the past. You can say any water that comes off of that house cannot be directed and cannot go to the neighboring property. I took a look at the house what's online from, first of all, they show no gutters or downspouts. You can also request that there be gutters and downspouts, they not be also directed to the neighbor's property. And when you take a look at the little bit of elevations that they show, when you take a look at the elevation of the driveway next door, and the elevation of the first floor, the door there, that's 10 feet, 10 feet. There's a lot of fill that's coming in there. If you're going to do this, you know, you've got to put some type of a condition on there, and you can do it. They've done it in Indian Hills, they've done it on a few other properties. I could pull them up for you, but the condition goes on to it. Also, if they're concerned about water, there was a house, I think it was on Arrowhead Lake in Indian Hills, what they did is they put cisterns in their backyard so that they collected all the water, and then it percolated down into the ground, and it didn't go into Arrowhead Lake. But if you're going to approve this, you put that condition on that the water does not go next door to the neighbor. I don't know the neighbor, I don't know the builder, but I know what's right, and I would like to see that to continue on. You can't put a burden on the neighbor, and you can't say engineering is going to take care of it or building is going to take care of it. I have experienced two teardown and rebuilds next to me, and you don't want a neighbor to have to go to the staff, and then the staff, when you say, "Well, they're building to a different plan than what they submitted", you don't want to have to hear from the staff, "Well, they're not done building yet. Let's wait and see what they end up with." No, that's not the way to do it. Put a condition on it if you're going to approve it. But I think they could come up with a better-looking plan than what there is there. I don't know if the neighbor next door is ready to sell or, you know, if some other builder is going to buy from him, but I think people can be a little bit more creative than this. The builder's got a lot of money in here, the way they're just plopping it down on the lot. That's my opinion. I'm not a professional. Thanks for your time.
Are there any other audience members? Yes. Again, just come up and give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Tracy Icorn Hicks. I live at 5708 Woodland Lane, which is right next door. So we're the house you're always talking about. We're the one that, we've been there 24 years. I've been a trial lawyer for 42 years. I don't like this project as I see it. I guess what I'd first look at is, if you put on the screen, what is it, number 15 you have? I'd like to know how much difference in height there is between the house that is existing and the house that's going up. If you look at the difference, is it 15 that shows the differential? Now, if you look at, if you look at it, right now, we are a little higher than the other house. As it is then, they're probably 10 feet higher than we are. They look right into our family room. The water is going to run off. I've been there for 25 years, and we've had, the water's gone into the basement of the house next door. I understand that there's problems there, but I got to tell you, this is a disaster, the way it is, the way I see it. It's just, the house is too big, too high for the property. I think another design would be better. I recognize it's a different place, but can I ask the-- I ask the, how much higher is this new house than the old one?
We don't have a calculation for that.
We can get it, or we can get it, show you.
But what I, we'll get, what, it's got to be at least 10 feet higher.
Oh, at least 15.
At least, probably 15 feet higher than the house, the existing house. That's not the character of the neighborhood. That's not what's there now. That's not what we've lived with. And we're going to get water. We're going to have problems. We, my concerns are not only the water. My concerns have to do with the water, and also just the size of the house and looking into our yard. I mean, I want to be neighborly, but it, I think they have to go back to the drawing board, get a new design, build something different. If it has to be without a basement, so be it. But let's lower it, and let's try to get something that doesn't interfere with, with the watershed and also with our privacy. Thank you.
Are there any other members of tonight's audience who would like to say anything about this matter? Seeing none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second? A motion and the second to close the public hearing? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That brings it up to the planning commission, and it's time for an open discussion. Is there any commissioner that would like to make a comment or make a motion on this matter? Commissioner Lee.
All right. So, the variance, I think, you know, obviously, no matter what this, whoever's going to build on this, this property is going to need that variance to get them out of that, that floodplain level. However, having said that, I do feel that this is a very, very sensitive property, and I am not convinced, after hearing the discussion, that it's responding to the site. If site is all about design and responding to your particular site, then I think this is the perfect test case, because it had just the right mix of constraints, that line going through the property, smaller footprint, raising the elevation. This is usually when you get the designers who design at their best, when they have those kinds of constraints. And clearly, there was enough time here to do this. I feel in some ways that it's just creating a problem in the sense that particularly it was very telling to me, once someone proposes that a neighbor raise their level to meet theirs, their, their grade level. I don't think it's wise to be adding additional fill. I think that this, this, this is a low land, low-lying land, and there are ways, obviously, to build out of it. But I don't feel that this particular proposal merits that variance at this time. It is not to say that I wouldn't grant a variance in the future, but I have real concerns with this proposal. I think that there have been some comments made tonight that are very good, and we may want to look at that in how we review variances. If all this information has to come after the variance, and we found this ourselves, it's very hard for the planning commission to determine whether that variance is really justified at this time. So, I understand that a lot of things get vetted during the building review process, but it is also then putting the burden, it's, it's shifting the burden, is what I'm saying. And I fully believe that everyone tries to do their best, but I would much rather give them a good start than the one that I feel might have too many issues right on the table from the get-go. So, I would not be able to recommend a variance at this time, based on those reasons.
Any further, Commissioner Bennett?
There's a couple things for me here that make it a tough balancing act. One, I mean, for them doing new construction, some type of variance, to Commissioner Lee's point, I mean, we'd have to support to get the homes out of the floodplain, especially if this house at its current level is flooded to seven feet full in the basement. Clearly, it needs to go up, and we would rather have someone live there than have this vacant lot. So, it'd be nice to see that to happen. However, I do believe, since I've been on the planning commission, any of the homes that have been proposed along the creek or within some sensitive watershed, we've at least been privy to the civil plans and see where the stormwater's going, not just floodwater, but where's, where is the water going, and how is it stored creatively before it makes its way to the creek or its way to the neighbors? And to some of the neighbor's point, that is something that I think I would need to see for the accountability of our city and from the concerns the neighbors have had before I think I could approve this. I recognize the design is way taller than other homes. That kind of thing just unfortunately is happening, and this is a low-lying spot, and to have a home there, maybe it could be a, one level shorter or do something different with the roofs, but I think we need to just see more of what's happening with the water on site, at least my opinion. Thank you.
Any, any other members of the planning commission? Vishner Middle, whose name I did pronounce correctly. Thank you.
It's like, the refined document says that for the variance request, you consulted with the Mini-HAHA watershed engineers. Did they, like, say anything that could be relevant?
They were, we explained the project to them, and they mentioned the two permits that they would require, which is normal procedure there, and they said they didn't see anything, any issues with it. So, it's pretty standard for them. To your point, Commissioner Bennett, there is a grading plan in your packet, or there's, there's supposed to be. The grading plan, the drainage has been done. So, I just want to make sure you guys understand that that has been done. That wasn't, that wasn't left out or omitted or anything. It's in that packet. The cut fill that we were talking about earlier is a different conversation. That's, that's about the FEMA 860, which is the level, the water level. Where we're adding fill to get our driveway to come in, we have to remove fill in the floodplain to accommodate for that. So, that's a different, I just want to make sure we're speaking the same language.
The cut and fill is specifically related to just the, of the driveway coming into the FEMA floodplain and that, the no-net fill, therefore, just to accommodate the FEMA regulations, correct?
Right.
As regard to that floodplain?
Yeah. There will be no, because we're talking about water and our neighbors and people downstream. There won't be any extra water from the site than there was today. That's all, I just want to make, because this is very complicated, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that. This, this water that's going to flood everybody's houses, it's not coming from our land. It's, we're going to net neutral here. So.
Any other questions, comments? I personally think that is the big issue. I mean, on the one hand, definitely, dealing with the FEMA regulations and having a raised house is a very meritorious and desirable thing. On the other hand, I, I am concerned that how the water is being handled as a result of that is received, receives and is part of a public hearing that can be seen, and that we have the sufficient data on it. And I suspect that because it's in a floodplain, that it's a more sensitive issue than it is just for the general development. But not to say that general development's, knowing where the water's going to go, isn't very important for purposes of variance. I suspect in Commissioner Lee's mind, that was the reason why she was concerned about the height of the house and tying the water to the variance, I mean, tying the variance to the water, not because of separate issues, because she thought, "Well, this higher house, maybe that will change the water." And so, that, she liked to know when she's do, when she's deciding upon a variance, what the impact will be. I suspect that was kind of your high-level thinking on that. So, I, I think this is a complicated matter that's had a lot of good commentary tonight. Is, are there any other comments among the commission? Commissioner Hamilton?
What we're asking for is to raise the first floor by six feet. And that's a variance that says height matters. What we're seeing here is a house that we see, and I think Commissioner Lee already addressed it, in lots of spots in Edina. You could find this house on my street, one very similar to it. It doesn't address the height issue. The variance is about height. This is a tall house. Does it fit in the code? Yes, it does. Does it address the fact that it's six feet above the existing first floor? To my mind, no, it does not. I believe that they have done a, a masterful job in getting the house to fit on a site with lots of constraints. I don't dispute that at all. I don't dispute that it's a handsome house. I don't dispute that that house exists in lots of places in Edina. I don't dispute that you should have a right, when you buy a lot, to build the house that you want, except in this place, that six-foot variance is making a request. And the request is to get along with your neighbors. The reason that the ordinance was written was to say, "We don't want to deviate from the standard to that degree." This, to my mind, does. And the house design doesn't address that particular issue. And I have a hard time with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hamilton. Are there any other, just, any other comments, or is, or any, does any commissioner wish to make a motion? Commissioner Bennett?
I just have a question, and maybe, I didn't bring my packet, but what I'm looking at was what I reviewed before, and I guess from the grading plan, I, I just recalled seeing this one plan that was kind of like the construction grading plan, grading, drainage, stormwater management, and erosion control. Unless there's something separate to that, I would like to see the, the permanent condition. I don't know if that is in there, but I, I didn't see that. All I've seen is how this will look during construction, with sill fences, temporary stockpiles, and so forth. Was that not in my packet, just maybe for the planning commission? Do you guys have?
This is an area, I always thought you were, had more expertise than I do. Jimmy?
So, the grading plan that I think you're looking at, the erosion, you see the contour lines that are on there. That's showing the proposed contour lines for what we will be building. And then the arrows that you see are the water and drainage runoff. I know it's kind of small in this format, but, so it's kind of overlaid. The grading plan is overlaid on top of the existing, existing conditions on top of the proposed. So, it's meant to show you all three of those things that are going on.
And I guess for me, it would be nice to see separate, to see the, the permanent condition that the neighbors will have to live with, and what is being done to address stormwater, except for deflecting it. I mean, is there any temporary storage? Because the whole eastern portion of this property, as you mentioned, is totally wide open. So, it looks like there'd be opportunities outside of the driveways to have rain gardens or some sort of...
But those rain gardens would be inside the floodway. That whole eastern side is in the floodway.
Okay.
So, we're moving water into a storage facility or area that's already in the creek, in a flood. As far as the north side with the neighboring over there, there is another page, and unfortunately, these are all on different pages, but it shows the top of the wall elevation, and then it shows the bottom of the wall elevation. So, you can see the grade changing through there, and why that's lower than the neighboring property with the garage. So, these are all the things that engineering looks at when they provide us building permits. They look at all these different pieces to make sure that we're doing what they want us to.
Yeah. I guess I'm, just seems in previous projects, when there are neighboring sites, like the one to the west, you know, more, more is done, I guess, to make them comfortable as well as us. Maybe just addressing that more clearly would have been nice. I know this is not, I mean, we're talking flood, but a flood happens every so, how often? Where storm events that could go into the neighbor's yard happens way more often. So, sometimes that's addressed more from a storm standpoint versus a flood. So...
Yeah. I mean, we've set this up for the worst possible scenario.
Okay.
And everything less than that is solved by the worst possible scenario. That's what they require us to do. So.
Commissioner Lee.
Chair, might I ask what our options are? Possibly, is there a way we could table this and give the applicant an opportunity to come back with some additional documentation? Otherwise, if we take a vote and we deny the variance, can they, can they come back again with some revised things? How does that work?
The city planning department, let me just answer, Ms. Ocker.
You can ask if the applicant would like the matter tabled. They'd have to agree to that, and then you can table it. If you deny the variance, it would not come back to you. They have the right to appeal this request, as it stands, to the city council. And then the city council would have an opportunity to look at it if they wish to appeal it. Likewise, if you approve it and a neighbor wishes to appeal it to the city council, they have the same opportunity.
Thank you.
Just so everybody understands, the, the footprint of the new home isn't any larger than the existing home. So, as far as the height, I know that's a subjective, that's a separate architectural conversation possibly, but there's no change in the structure as far as adding runoff or adding water to the creek. It's the same hardcover, if that helps.
So, any other questions or comments? I had one question. Commissioner Bennett?
I guess to me, you know, obviously, this whole FEMA thing is the one dictating it, but, and now that you've addressed, you know, that these are the final plans and worst-case scenario is designed, I get that. Is there anything done landscape-wise to kind of appease some of that runoff? I'm just, just looking at the site. You have this huge new driveway that's going to shed water faster toward the creek, and I just, maybe there's something that's going to help treat that water or slow it down before it gets there, just to reduce sedimentation and the stuff coming from the driveway going into the creek? Is there anything done landscaping-wise down by the creek or by the driveway or something?
So, you're, you're referring to a normal rain event rather than a flood?
Correct.
There's going to be, are you saying there's going to be more water now coming into the creek in a normal rain event?
I'm not saying there's more, but the rate at which it will get there is faster. And now it's taking stuff that's on the driveway, whatever, you know, there's going to be more plumes on the driveway versus the grass likely, and now you're speeding it up, coming from the driveway. We've seen other times where we're not here because of the, raising the, I guess, the, the free, you know, considering the freeboard of the flood, but what is being done to treat that stormwater before it gets to the creek, if it's, if the site has been amended like it has here. Just a question.
Okay. So, you're asking about the pollution of the runoff, is what you're, is that what you're referring to?
That and the rate at which it gets to the creek, yeah.
Yeah. I would say that the, two things are going on to answer the question. One, is there a more direct path for the water coming from the street or the driveway to the creek? The answer to that is yes. Is this, is there flatter areas in the front yard than there are currently now to perk water in versus what the current conditions are, because it's pretty steep? I would say yes to that, too. Do those two offset each other? I don't know how to answer that. We're definitely running down, we're slowing down the rate of water to the creek in the front yard, and we're speeding it up on the driveway. Maybe that's the best way to answer it. Does that make sense, Commissioner Bennett?
Jessica, you have some things?
Basically, yes, but no. So...
If I could just speak to the regulatory requirement as far as water quality goes, we don't require water quality improvements for any building permit application. we don't require water quality improvements for any building permit application. We will, in cases insensitive, landlocked areas and things require volume reductions, but we don't have any water quality requirements for any building permit applicant. The Watershed District often has water quality requirements, and so that would be part of their permit process.
Yeah, I guess for me, just knowing that, it'd be nice to see those kind of things done as it would for the neighbors who have concerns, you know? Oh, they're going to take care of it, but we don't know. I think oftentimes, a project like this comes to us, and even though it's this far along, it's a little further along. Those things have been vetted out, so...
And at the time of building permit application, they have to make an application to the Watershed District, too. So, they wouldn't have submitted anything and had those requirements from the Watershed District yet, and the city wouldn't require any water quality treatment for a typical new house.
Maybe there's just a way for us to better address, you know, concerned neighbors and other citizens, where this is their opportunity to opine and, you know, just assume for the best. It kind of, I guess, to their concerns, if this has already been proven to not work out in their favor, it'd be nice to be able to approve something like this with a little more confidence. And I don't know what that looks like, but just consideration.
Jessica, can you speak at all to what kind of information would be presented to the Watershed District or the city that we aren't receiving that, you know? Let me stop the question there.
So, if this is a stormwater question, there is kind of the idea of conditioning that water doesn't impact residents. That's already in city code, and that will already be required with their building permit application to prove that. And that's going to come in the form of a stormwater management plan, which is required for a new structure, for that building permit for a new structure. And so, what we would require is similar to what's in your packet, which shows the contours and where water will actually move on the landscape. So, they'll have to have a professional engineer certify where that water's going to flow, and that it won't impact a neighbor's property. The footprint of the home is staying the same, so even if you made it 10 stories high, there wouldn't be additional runoff from that. It's still the same footprint, same hardcover. The only change in total impervious is the addition of that driveway, which has drainage that's going to flow towards the east, where there's not a neighboring property.
So, I think you gave us two answers. One is, basically, what the information provided is more detailed version of the information we received about the actual plants to, you know, this information, the actual plants make sure the water doesn't go elsewhere. Is that correct?
So, there's the drainage plan that shows where those arrows, where the water's going to go. That's going to look similar to what you have in your packet.
And there's a how-to, and there'll be a how-to component, I suppose, that we aren't receiving.
How?
This, what we receive is kind of like, this is what it will be, and then when they apply to the Watershed District and they apply for the permit, there's more detail about, and this is how we're going to accomplish the goal we set out.
And how they want to show that, either through narrative or through a survey. I know from the city permitting perspective, they have the option to show it through narrative or in a survey. Either way would be acceptable. For the Watershed District permit, I'm not sure what they require, whether it has to be a narrative or whether they can just show in a survey with arrows.
But again, it's more detail about actually, this is how we're going, again, tonight for the planning commission, we get the, this is the goal, and this is what will happen. And then for the watershed and for you, whether it's a narrative or tables or whatever, it's the, and this is how we're going to accomplish it.
Yeah, and I think that this plan shows that with contours, is this is how the water's going to move, is down this low area. And then we would require also an as-built survey at the end that shows the actual elevations and contours and swales, or whatever they are proposing. And they have to submit, that has to be approved before they get their certificate of occupancy. So, engineering reviews that drainage plan at the very end, too, before they can occupy the house and before escrow is released.
And so, the second thing you answered, I think, was kind of, kind of, you kind of said, "We think this works."
I don't see an increase in hardcover in the house, so there wouldn't be an increase in runoff from that structure. There is an increase in the driveway, so there would be additional runoff from that that sheds towards the east.
And which is fine by your perspective, because that's not a neighbor.
It conforms to the ordinance, which says you can't increase the risk to your neighbor or add any water to neighboring sites.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica. That was very helpful.
Yeah.
Any further questions, comments, motions? Questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Lee?
If we were, would fellow commissioners go along with applying a condition to this variance for approval? And that is, I understand about arrows and all, but I do believe some calculations are involved to actually determine quantity of water runoff and showing that the net-net is zero. If this is something that has to be done further down the line, it's not a wasted effort by the applicant, especially if it will help us to come to a better understanding of whether this will have an impact. My sense is that the grade is the height issue. That's what's being raised. You know, I know by default, it raises the whole height of the house now because we've raised the grade. There has been discussion saying that the cut and fill is, negates each other, but I am not convinced of that, and we don't know unless we know actual amounts of cut and fill, and that will come later as well. So, might we put a condition on this approval of this variance that, in order for the approval, the applicant will return with these calculations showing that there is no additional increased runoff justified by calculations, obviously not just arrows, and that the cut and fill is projected to be a certain quantity, which is taken from the site, and no net increase of fill. And I think that would probably go a long ways towards making it more understandable.
Commissioner Hamilton?
If you ask that as a question, and I think that you did, if you wanted to put a motion, then we could find out that way. But if you ask it as a question for me, we have that question on every project that we get. And in my, my position is that that's why we have staff to review the drawings, and they do that, and they do an excellent job of it. Does a mistake happen? I'm certain that it does. Would we catch it? I'm fairly certain that we wouldn't if they missed it. I think it's important that it be done. I think we can emphasize it, and I think everyone is well aware, this is a very sensitive site, and it must be done with professional care, and it must be done accurately. That piece, I believe, the sticking point for me is very simple. They're asking to raise the house six feet above the variance, but they didn't design a house that was sensitive to that six-foot height increase, and that didn't address particularly that six-foot height increase. I believe engineering staff can handle the pieces that have been raised and raised carefully and thoughtfully by the citizens that are here. And I think they have pointed out that it's significantly sensitive and has to be done accurately and well, and I'm sure they will. For me, that's not the issue.
Can I ask one question before I'll get to you, Jimmy? Just a second. Now, this is a question for Jessica and Chris. The data that Commissioner Lee is asking for, is that, does the, is that typically received by staff, like these calculations, et cetera?
Certainly, it will absolutely be a requirement and part of the building permit application. It's already been described to the permit applicant in a memo of what they're required to prove to us in that process.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
I kind of echo what Commissioner Hamilton was saying. I mean, for me, just learning, you know, oftentimes, we see things farther, or I have seen things farther along than this, but knowing that's not required, or maybe it's just shown visually or effectively of like how water is actually going to behave, and even though there's no neighbor on the east side, but just considerations that are going to be put in place, you know, like landscaping plans, et cetera. So, maybe it's just, I'm outgoing the distress of the neighbors and the process of, you're just not able to necessarily know that much at this point, and that is up to our staff who has done a good job. But it seems not all the time, just from what some neighbors have said. To require some of that to get done, I do also think it's maybe skirting around what the real issue is here. And I think it is more so what Commissioner Hamilton's raised the point of.
Any other comments, questions, one wish to make a motion? Or would you like to, anyone have a nice weekend? Commissioner Hamilton?
I would move to deny the request, the variance request.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to deny. Is there any further discussion? Jackie, would you do a voice vote, please?
A yes is to deny. A no is to not deny, to a double negative.
Yes. An aye would be to vote in favor of the motion to deny the proposal. A nay would be to vote against the motion to deny the proposal. So, if you could do a roll vote, I would appreciate it.
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Nay.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Nay.
Which leaves us at three to three.
Four to two.
Four to two.
Were you aye or nay?
Nay.
You were nay.
I was nay.
And I was nay.
And Bennett was nay.
Oh, you weren't aye.
No, he was nay.
Wait, wait. So, you understand what nay means?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that makes... Thank you. Thank you so much. I should never assume with you. I apologize, Jimmy. That motion has been denied. Does anyone, are there any other motions then? Commissioner Thorson?
I move approval of the variance, subject to the additions outlined in the staff memo with the added emphasis of reviewing the engineering calculations pertaining to the runoff, particularly as it affects the residence, neighboring residents.
Are there, is there a second to that motion? A motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? Todd, could I ask you to restate your additions again a little slower?
I just, for a particular point of emphasis of making sure the engineering calculations are reviewed thoroughly, and that was it. It was not a specific condition, just a point of emphasis.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. Jackie, could you do another roll vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Lee?
Nay.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Nemborov?
Chris, this has obviously been a very interesting matter for a lot of people. Does this now go to the city council, or what is the next step? The variance is approved.
The variance is approved unless there's an appeal. And that would occur if somebody wanted to appeal the decision of the planning commission, they would need to file the appeal within 10 days to the city clerk.
Thank you very much, Chris. That's helpful information. Well, that concludes this matter. So, we, the planning commission, yes, we will move on to our next item. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Which is community comment. And in community comment, that allows a member of the community to come up and speak for three minutes on a matter relevant to the planning commission that is not on our agenda. So, is anyone, would anyone like to speak about a matter? Seeing none?
Motion closed. Second.
Motion, a second to close community comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we move on to item seven on our agenda, reports and recommendations. Are there any? Commissioner Lee?
Well, what's a report? Can I report on the 70th and Cahill work group, or is that more of a comment? Chair and member comment? I'll report.
Report.
We had our first work group meeting, and actually, we're meeting tomorrow night. So, we are having back-to-back meetings in one week apart. We feel we have a very good, mixed, varied group. We actually have two of the major commercial property owners of the 70th and Cahill Plaza as part of the work group. So, that is, adds a nice dynamic and an interesting mix to it. There was discussion from our group as far as considering the actual borders or boundaries of that small area plan, which is something I think kind of surprised us all a little bit. In the past, the borders seem to have been pretty well-defined in most small area plans, and in this case, we're going to have a little bit more discussion. Let's see, fellow Commissioner Strauss, do you have anything else to add?
No, there is a new member of BICO team who, Jimmy, I don't know if he's, Tim Griffin, has been involved?
Okay. Who I think is going to be an excellent professional, you know, who will be leading. And so, that's, I think they're, I'm looking forward to it. We've got a very, very good group, I believe. Thank you.
Chris, does the city council know of Tim Griffin now? Have they met him? Are they aware of his joining the?
No.
No, then, okay. All right. Well, they probably will soon, I guess, then.
Yeah, I mean, he'll work through in, throughout the process, but it was actually the planning commission that chose the team.
Yeah.
So, he'll be, he will get very familiar with everybody, I'm sure.
Okay. Are there any other reports? Commissioner Bennett?
Just a quick update on 44th and France. We had a small area plan working group meeting this Monday, early. Seemed to go well, and was kind of planning our final, hopefully, final community meeting for this coming Monday. So, in case anyone's interested in going, it will be at the Morningside Community Church. And I think we have our agenda kind of vetted out for that. Sheila and I will speak a little bit into it, and Carrie will be there as well, Commissioner or Planner Teague. I think some of the things that you mentioned and we talked about at the task force meeting seem to get vetted out a little better at our meeting. I think just getting some more clarity on what this document seems to serve as, I think, gelled in people's minds more, at least on our group. So, hopefully, we can communicate that out to the community, too.
That's excellent. Sometimes people all mean the same thing, but words get caught up.
Yeah.
That's excellent. That's great, that's great news if that's happening. Thank you for all, I'd like to personally just thank Jimmy and Sheila for all the work they've done on 44th. I think that they've gone above and beyond what may have been expected at the outset and dealt with some issues. So, thank you very much for what you've done.
Is it possible for me to say one thing just from the neighbors?
I'm sorry, it's kind, why don't you check with?
Is it a public hearing?
We've kind of concluded. We've kind of concluded that portion of the meeting, so I would suggest, what you should do is meet with Planner Acker during office hours, perhaps.
We'll appeal this, but we're very disappointed in your lack of sensitivity to the neighbors, all of you. That's all I can say.
Are there any other reports and recommendations?
Is it a public hearing?
Sir, yes. However, we had plenty of opportunity for people to speak, and then we had a community comment also, and the people...
That was prior to your vote. What you make a comment after your vote, I think that's appropriate.
Are there any other reports and recommendations? Okay. Next item is correspondence and petitions. Are there, is there any other correspondence or petitions that we need to address? Okay. Chair and member comments? Anything?
You beat the chair.
Huh?
No.
Members? I'm sorry. Do we need a timeout, or?
Well, I'm going to say something, then, I think. I think one of the issues that we're very careful about here, I think, you know, we always deal with the pyramid. This is what we can deal with. We can deal with these things, according to Mr. Knutson, that says these are the things that we're allowed to talk about. And most of the things that we talk about in variance conditions are at the very top of the pyramid. There's not much that we can talk about. That leaves an awful lot of design off the table, and I think it would be good for us to get together in a workshop in one way or another and talk about what those design issues are and what we actually may talk about, what we actually may deal with. I think the one that we saw tonight was case in point, that was about design. It wasn't about, it was about that simply, and had, I believe I've said enough. But I think that we need to have a short workshop that can help us all understand together what it is and how it is that on some of these issues, we can address what's presented to us and give guidance and leadership to the design team that's bringing it to the table, so that they can respond in a more articulate, clever fashion to the problems at hand.
May I query you, Mr. Hamilton?
Sir?
So, from my non-architecture brain, are you saying that perhaps from a design perspective, they could have made some choices, would have made it, kept the same essentially number of stories, but lessened the effect of that, that height?
That might have been one way to do it. One of the things that's really simple is that they selected a site and decided to invest in a site that they thought was a very large site that would allow them to build a very large building, and they were wrong. They were pinned. There were three things that pinned them: the sewer line, the creek, and the variance. And they answered two, but they didn't answer the third. The variance was height, and they didn't address height in the way that it was designed. And the simple answer for the height was, you can't have it. They can have it in other places, but they didn't, they didn't go to my, to my mind. But that's something that I think we need to wrestle with together to understand what can design do, and what is a tool, is it, that planning can help them address? That was a building that you have seen as you drive around Edina. You can even tell me what color it's going to be. It's going to be gray and white, and you know it, and I know it.
Just white. A little black on the back.
So, enough said. But I think we need that workshop, and I think we need to have Chris and Carrie and to wrestle with those pieces and know what it is that we can do to help shape the city that we want.
I thought that the issue, it kind of came down to me that, you know, I think, I think the comments that you, John, made and everyone made, Susan, you made, were very good. I just felt that if they come, you know, I'll make it back up. I thought one of the concerns, perhaps, is that in something this heated, do we, should we be making some kind of statement about why we voted that way? I think that's hard to do. I don't know if we all spoke. For me personally, it wasn't a question of, did I think the design was appropriate enough or not, which I think is one half of the design comments that we've had on the planning commission, was the other half that I focused on personally, which was, does the design, except for the variance in and of itself, meet code? And I felt that it did, and the variance, I thought, was dealt with by addressing the floodwater. And I felt, and then once we got, once I got comfortable with that the, they provided essential, enough elements of the stormwater that a member of the city staff would go on record and saying, "We think this is good for stormwater," I felt like my level of review was over. I personally subscribe, and this comes from working with public company boards, to the theory of nose in, hands out, which means I'm over, I'm looking over things, but I'm not doing the work. I'm not reviewing the work. I'm making sure that the right things are being done, nose in, but I don't have my hands in, so I'm doing the work itself. And now that said, that means that sometimes you vote for things that you may wish were different than they were, and, but I feel like that's not my role to decide. And as a liberal arts guy and a lawyer, I would hate to see a city that was designed the way I thought it should be, to be honest. So, that was kind of my thinking. Jimmy?
Yeah, I wish I maybe could have expressed, it probably was a surprise to people, but for me, we were at the top of that pyramid in this, and, you know, we had, you know, limited discretion, and it was, was there a practical difficulty? And, I mean, this whole site is, I mean, there's lots of it. And just to echo your points, like, you know, I'm voting affirmative for something I wish looked different or appeared or felt different, but that's not, that's not part of my judgment in this matter, and it shouldn't be, based off of what, I guess, was communicated to us. And I think I've seen changes in neighborhoods like this, that it's the first of the change, and they kind of alluded to that, too. You know, these floods are going to get higher and more extreme, and things are going to likely change around that area. And unfortunately, this is the first one to change. If the house next door was doing the same very thing, it just won't even be a question. There's a little element of that, but just to kind of echo your point.
I'm sorry, we need to get together and talk it through.
Yeah, I mean, I have to echo. I think it, you know, it is by no means an ideal solution to a problem. I mean, it's a podium, and it's a three-story house with some dirt piled up in front of it. Not the greatest design, even I can see that. But in the end, that's the way the city code is, and it carves out that specific exemption for the FEMA floodplain. And to me, if they're not, had they asked for a height variance, no chance for me for that. But I think because that's the practical difficulty we're dealing with, I'm kind of, as I said, very lukewarm to the project, but I, as a kind of very strict constructionist of how the ordinances are written, I would defer that way, and similarly, I think, to what the way Jimmy and Ian leaned.
Anyone else? Anyone else have anything to say? Good discussion, and I think it is, I agree with John. I mean, we deal with, we've dealt with a handful of kind of very similar issues as members of the planning commission that, you know, from time to time, we should collect these and perhaps have off-site discussions or off, or discussions outside of our planning commission meetings that are formal city meetings, but that allow us to engage with staff and kind of generalize and weigh the pros and cons and the things we should, the things we should think about when we consider some of these common matters, because it's stressful for us, and we don't want, you know, it's hard to make someone unhappy. Staff comments?
Way too smart for that.
So, that's the only other item on the agenda. Any second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Good night.